Good evening, everyone. Notice of this meeting's date and day, place, and time has been disseminated as required under the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Copies of the agenda are also posted on the city's website and Linden TV for the public. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a prayer and flag salute?
God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled, and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations. This we ask in thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the council chambers is through the three doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided in front of the room with your name and address. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you must take a call, please leave the council chambers to do so. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Orman.
Yes, I'm here.
Javik.
Present.
Caldwell.
Present.
Mohammed.
Present.
Rivas.
Present.
Delgado.
Here.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Excused.
Hudak.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Here. Can we have approval of the public session meetings of August 19, 2025, please?
Council President, I move for approval of the public meeting minutes and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Abstained.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak. And Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. We'll now move on to presentations for this evening. We're going to start first with the presentations for the General Polaski Memorial Parade Committee of St. Teresa's Linden. I would ask Mayor Armstead to please join me on the floor at this time.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. As they say in Polish, dobry wieczysz skim.
Our first resolution is for our marshal, Christopher Hudak. Okay, can you please come forward? Yep. Okay. I'll read the resolution right now. Whereas Christopher Hudak has been selected to serve as a 2025 Linden marshal to the 88th Annual Polaski Day Parade in New York City on Sunday, October 5, 2025, by the General Polaski Memorial Parade Committee of St. Teresa's Linden at its 44th Annual Sashin Dinner to represent thousands of Linden and Union County residents of Polish descent. And whereas Chris is a graduate of Rosalind Catholic High School at Rutgers University, he also has a master's degree in public administration from Kane University and completed his Juris Doctorate at Rutgers. Chris is a longtime former resident of Linden and currently lives in Clark with his wife Terry, their daughter Catherine, and son Jackson. And whereas Chris has been active in the Linden community for many years. He was elected as the 16th Union County Judge of the Superior Court on November 2022, and he previously served four terms as Union County Commissioner. During his time as a commissioner, he focused on infrastructure growth, education, substance abuse, and recreation opportunities for residents. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, he championed initiatives ensuring our residents had access to testing economic relief programs, food distribution, and vaccination programs. He also created the Union County Infrastructure Grant to support public projects in municipalities and advocated investment in the Union County Park System. And whereas, as a caring surrogate, Chris oversees the probate of wills and other estate matters, supervises minors' trust funds, and serves as the clerk of the court of adoptions, adult guardianships, and estate matters. He is a licensed attorney and a member of the National Association of Counties Large Urban County Caucus. He has served on many local nonprofit boards and was elected member of the New Jersey State Democratic Committee and is a parish chair of the Linden Democratic Committee. He was a delegate of the 2012 Democratic National Convention. He is a member of the Linden Knights of Columbus, a parishioner of St. John the Apostle Church in Clark, and an Eagle Scout. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council and the city of Linden that they do hereby congratulate Christopher Hudak on being selected as a 2025 marshal of the Linden contingent to the Polaski Parade and thank him for his long and dedicated service to the Polish-American community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered in the minutes of the council of the city of Linden and a copy suitably prepared be presented to Chris Hudak in recognition of the foregoing and signed by myself and Mayor Derek Armstead. Congratulations, sir.
Briefly, what I would imagine to keep the meeting going.
Never short of words.
I will, I promise, I will be. I thank you for this honor, Council President. You know, most of my life living in this community, to be honored in this way, I know that the importance of the Polaski community to the city of Linden and to be chosen as a marshal is a tremendous honor. And it was an easy yes because Michelle Yamakaitis came to say, you know, would you serve? And it wasn't a question that could be answered with a no either. But this is a very nice gesture on behalf of the council. So nice to hear, you know, wonderful things about yourself. But I really appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and I welcome everyone to join us as we walk in New York City on October 5. And please join us, and it'll be a beautiful day and a lot of Polish pride on display. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you miss Polonia? Marcelina Domaszczka? Okay. All right, Marcelina.
You did such a good job.
Congratulations, Marcelina.
All right. This resolution is for our Miss Polonia from Linden this year, 2025 Marcelina Domaszczka? Am I saying it correct? Okay. Whereas Marcelina Domaszczka has been selected to serve as a 2025 Miss Polonia to the 88th Annual Polaski Day Parade in New York City to represent the thousands of Linden and Union County residents of Polish descent. Whereas Marcelina attends the Union County Vocational Technical School, and she is learning about legal studies and criminology. In the future, she hopes to become a constitutional lawyer. She is also a graduate of the Polish Supplementary School of Karol Wojtyla in Linden. And whereas Marcelina is the Secretary of Skill USA, the Treasurer of Student Government, and the Committee Head of Luminary for Relay for Life. She is also on the varsity swim team, a part of two drama clubs, Chess Club, Yearbook, and Math League. Outside of school, she takes voice and piano lessons and participates in Polish music competitions and is an ambassador for the International Music Competition. And whereas Marcelina is very dedicated to her faith, family, and friends. She regularly attends CCD, and she credits her parents for her deep appreciation for her cultural heritage. She is grateful for the opportunity to represent the Polish community and feels very fortunate to be surrounded by people who are also committed to fostering such a vibrant community. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Linden that they do hereby recognize Marcelina Domaszczka on being selected as a 2025 Miss Polonia to proudly represent the Polish-American community of Linden, Union County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered into the minutes of the city council and the city of Linden and a copy suitably prepared to be presented to Marcelina in recognition of the foregoing and signed by myself and Mayor Armstead. Congratulations, Marcelina. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Yep. Junior Miss Polonia. Okay, come on up. Okay, I'd like to introduce our junior Miss Polonia for Linden, Julia Gogolowska. Okay. Whereas Julia Gogolowska has been selected to serve as a 2024 Junior Miss Polonia to the 88th Annual Polaski Day Parade in New York City to represent thousands of Linden and Union County residents of Polish descent. And whereas Julia is a fifth-grade student at Clark Mills Elementary School, where she is actively involved. She ran for student council president, and she volunteers weekly at the school library, and she plays violin for the school orchestra. And whereas Julia has attended the Polish Supplementary School in Linden along with regular CCD classes at St. Teresa of the Child Jesus Parish. She is also a member of the Polish scouting organization and the Mushrooms of the Polish Forest Group. She loves scouting songs and games. Her favorite activity is to perform kominyak because she gets to spend time with friends in a joyful atmosphere. And whereas Julia is also very passionate about gymnastics and holds a special place in her heart. She loves how much it requires strength, devotion, and precision. And whereas every activity that Julia takes on, she feels that it is an opportunity for growth and self-discovery, and she is not afraid of challenges and always strives to pursue her passions with dedication and enthusiasm. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Linden that they do hereby congratulate Julia Gogolowska on being selected as a 2025 Junior Miss Polonia to proudly represent the Polish-American community of Linden and Union County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered in the minutes of the city council and the city of Linden and a copy suitably prepared represented to Julia Gogolowska in recognition of the foregoing and signed by myself and Mayor Armstead. Congratulations, Julia. Did you get it? Oh, I'm starting again. There you go. Yep. All right, now we'd like to invite our little cutie up here, Kalina Kuda. And she even came in her Polish costume this evening. Love it, Kalina. Okay. Whereas Kalina Kuda has been selected to serve as a 2025 Little Miss Polonia of the 88th Annual Polaski Day Parade in New York City on Sunday, October 5, to represent thousands of Linden and Union County residents of Polish descent. And whereas Kalina is a student of the local Tammy's Elementary School where she promotes Polish culture among others at Multicultural Day. Her parents taught her how to speak, read, and write in Polish fluently, which helps her communicate with her family members in Poland. And whereas Kalina is a member of the Polish Scout Troop and also takes part in Polish events as a spectator. And whereas Kalina has learned how to play the piano and violin along with being a swimmer, gymnast, and skier. She has also written small books and completed countless art projects. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council and the city of Linden that they do hereby congratulate Kalina Kuda on being selected as a 2025 Little Miss Polonia to proudly represent the Polish-American community of Linden and Union County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered in the minutes of the city council and the city of Linden and a copy suitably prepared to be presented to Kalina in recognition of the foregoing and signed by myself and Mayor Armstead. Richard, our president for our Linden contingent, we'd like to ask you to come up if you'd like to say a few words. Okay. This is our president from the Linden contingent.
Mr. Mayor and Council President, thank you very much for recognizing Polish community. And I'm inviting everyone for the Polish festival this Saturday. It's going to be a lot of fun this Saturday and then October 5 for the Polish parade in Manhattan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody, we're going to take one big picture, okay?
Everybody, we're going to take one big picture, okay?
Yep. join us. Hey. Okay. Whereas thyroid cancer affects approximately 44,000 individuals in the United States each year, and about 2,300 deaths occurring from the disease, making it a significant public health concern. And whereas thyroid cancer is diagnosed in women about three times more often than men, and the average age of diagnosis is around 51 years old. The disease has been commonly diagnosed between the ages of 20 and 55. The five-year survival rate for thyroid cancer is over 98%. Whereas raising public awareness and understanding are vital tools for improving early detection and diagnosis, supporting research and fostering a community of hope for those affected by and living with the disease. Most people do very well after treatment, but follow-up care is very important. Since thyroid cancer grows slowly, they can reoccur even 10 to 20 years after initial treatment. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and the City of Linden Council, we do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Thyroid Cancer Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that all residents, government agencies, and businesses are encouraged to participate in events and campaigns designated to increase awareness of thyroid cancer. And be it further resolved that the City of Linden Council expresses its support for research, preventative care programs, and treatment that improve the quality of life for those impacted by thyroid cancer. And signed by the Mayor and myself. And we'd like to thank Natisha for bringing this forward to us. You know, she's a thyroid cancer survivor, one tough lady, okay? She's, all the council and officials have the pins on for this month for thyroid cancer. It's so important to get checked.
Please check your neck. It's very important.
And Natisha, we're so proud of you. You are a fighter. I have for you a bracelet, a handmade bracelet for thyroid cancer awareness.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Yep, so you just learned something new, Mayor. We have ordinance 6928 and 6929. Councilman Strano?
Yes, Council President. At this time, I'd like to, if I can do this, in one motion table for further review, ordinance numbers 6928 and 6929, and request a second on that.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Okay, ordinances on hearing this evening, 6936.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-26.1, pickup and drop-off zones, schools shall be, and the same is hereby amended as follows. 7-26.1 Pickup and Drop-Off Zones, Schools, Name of Street, at East Morris Avenue, Time, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m., and 2:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. North side of the street between Southwood Avenue and Clinton Street, entire length.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly posted and published?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance 6936. Move for approval and request a second.
Yes.
My mic belongs to the state.
Mike, thank you. Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6937, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-27, Bus Stops Shall Be, and the same is hereby amended as follows. 7-27 Bus Stops Delete East Morris Avenue, westbound on the northly, northwesterly side at Southwood Avenue and Clinton Street, beginning 95 feet northeastally from curb line of Southwood Avenue and extending 275 feet northeastally therefrom, 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Councilman Strano?
Yes, Council President. This, I'd like to also move for tabling 6937, and I'll ask for a second on that.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6938, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 Traffic shall be, and the same is hereby amended as follows. Chapter 7 Traffic, 7-33 Handicap Parking Regulation, 7-33.1A Handicap Parking on the Street, Remove 1018A University Terrace, One Space.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to move that the ordinance 6938 hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted, and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 6939, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $96,800 for Memorial Park Safety Material Upgrades for the Department of Parks and Recreation, and Authorizing the Issuance of $91,960, $960 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 6939, and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Abstain.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6940, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $198,000 for Acquisition of Traffic Threat Equipment for the Office of Emergency Management, and Authorizing the Issuance of $188,100 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-40. Move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6941, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $297,000 for Various Capital Improvements for the Division of Transportation and Properties, and Authorizing the Issuance of $282,150 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-41. Move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Abstain.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Members of council and a dius, if you're not speaking, if you could turn off your microphones, please, we're having a few issues with the microphones. Thank you. Ordinance 6942, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $341,000 for Various Capital Equipment Improvements for the Police Department, and Authorizing the Issuance of $323,950 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 6943. Move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6940, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $198,000 for Acquisition of Traffic Threat Equipment for the Office of Emergency Management, and Authorizing the Issuance of $188,100 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to move the hearing be closed on ordinance number 6943, the ordinance adopted, and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Abstain.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6943, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $543,900 for Wilson Park Restoration for the Department of Parks and Recreation, and Authorizing the Issuance of $236,455 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to move that the ordinance 6938 hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted, and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 6939, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $96,800 for Memorial Park Safety Material Upgrades for the Department of Parks and Recreation, and Authorizing the Issuance of $91,960, $960 Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 6939, and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Ordinance 6940, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $198,000 for Acquisition of Traffic Threat Equipment for the Office of Emergency Management, and Authorizing the Issuance of $188,100 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President. I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-41. Move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 6941, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $297,000 for Various Capital Improvements for the Division of Transportation and Properties, and Authorizing the Issuance of $282,150 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number 69-41. Move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
So you think about the dollars that we're spending versus what we're receiving, it's quite a bargain, I think, to have to, to be able to upgrade an entire park for maybe a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars or a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's not a bad deal. And so if you have noticed, like you mentioned earlier, that you've seen money allocated for parks, and again, it's an ongoing thing. So in order to get every park in the town, we have to do a few maybe every year. And unfortunately, by the time we finish with the last one, we'll probably cycle them back around again to have to do parks again. So it's just one of the things that we have to do. You know, I don't know if you have any children, but I think that, you know, anybody with children or grandchildren is probably more than delighted that we're upgrading our parks and keeping them nice for our residents.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
John Kizer, Linden. All right, so since we're talking about Milkowski Park specifically right now, so Mr. Pressley's not here right now. He gave that whole presentation last year, right? Boards, everything, I was real excited for it. I'm a guardian of a special needs child and I, and I, so this is a continuation of that that has not started yet?
It has not started yet.
Okay, so what is the timeline then? Because he made this presentation last year. It was a few parks, Nowsky, I believe, right? Milkowski, and I forget, another one. So, so we're adding money onto something that hasn't started? So that's the confusing part, I think people are not understanding.
It's a matching grant that we have to-
Okay, when is it getting started?
Okay, probably late fall or early spring of next year. We have the special needs camp in the building there and of course, we don't want to tear up a park when the kids are there. So it'll be getting, from my understanding, from what I've been told, it will be getting started in the spring of twenty-twenty-six, early spring.
Okay, so, all right, so he made a, he made the presentation in twenty-twenty-four with, with no expectation to start until twenty-twenty-six. Okay, well, we'll-
It takes time to pick out equipments and all that stuff.
Thank you.
I think, I think when he made the presentation, he was applying for the grants. And now the grant money is starting to come in, we can actually put the money to use.
Council President, one other comment, too.
Mr. Antonelli.
So now, now that the funding's being appropriated and there's a process and a procedure, we're gonna have to go out to bid for certain improvements that are over the threshold. So unfortunately, it does take some time to get the process started, shovel on the ground. So it does take time and that's just another step in the process here, which is appropriating the funds to make the improvements to the parks.
Thank you, Mr. Antonelli. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, but I'd like to make a few comments regarding our parks real quick with some of the, when a grant comes around, you know, that's when we have to act. So, but I had originally, and this goes back to our complaint that I was getting from constituents regarding conditions of basketball courts, and I thought that at that time that I was gonna take upon myself to do a study of all the parks and see what condition those courts were in. And it turns out that we had a park in, I think it was the ninth or tenth ward, where we had a child injure himself in a crack. He got his foot caught in a crack and I was, I was getting complaints about grass growing up through a few, a few of the cracks and obviously, and that was in the ninth ward, that park was in much worse condition. But when I brought it up in one of our committee meetings, it was Jerry Bishop that said, you know, we should do a comprehensive, you know, study of all the parks throughout the entire city and put together a capital budget project, which probably would take almost ten years to complete. And that's still, that study is still underway. Of course, some of these parks are gonna come, you know, because grants come and that's when we have to strike when the iron's hot and they'll be done first. But this is a process and this is something that the city has taken upon itself to do. We voted on this council to do that study and I think we, Keith does have that and we're gonna get to every park, some sooner than others, that's just the way, you know, things go, but it is something that is gonna be taken care of as, in the needs priority type of a procedure. Just want to make that comment and at this time I want to move that the hearing on ordinance sixty-nine forty-four be closed and the ordinance adopted and request a second.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Abstain.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine forty-five, please.
An ordinance amending chapter one dash two entitled Definitions, being ordained by the council of the city of Linden, section one, that chapter one dash two entitled Definitions shall be amended to add the following, licensed inspector shall mean the city clerk or their designate.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to close the public hearing on sixty-nine dash forty-five and move the motion and respectfully ask for a second.
A second, that.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine forty-six, please.
An ordinance amending chapter four dash two entitled Peddling and Soliciting, be ordained by the council of the city of Linden, section one, that four dash two entitled Peddling and Soliciting shall be amended to add the following, four dash two point one four, enforcement. This section shall be enforced by the Board of Health and the Police Department.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to close the public hearing on ordinance sixty-nine forty-six and move the motion and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell. Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. We'll now move on to consent agenda items. All items listed with asterisks are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. We have items number one through three this evening, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to move items one through three and ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak. Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, now move on to reports from members of the governing body, their committee reports and their ward reports. Councilwoman Orman.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna start with my budget review and finance report. Approval is being requested for the following finance actions. The payment of bills totaling one million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Bills have been signed by the mayor, council president and the finance chairwoman and a detailed check register and vouchers are on file in the clerk's office. We are in receipt of the investment made by the city treasurer for the month of August at the rate of four point one five percent. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, my next report is gonna be the Division of Transportation and Properties. I hereby submit the monthly financial report from the Division of Transportation and Parking for the month of August, two thousand and twenty-five. This report includes the collection of on and off street parking meters, railroad parking lots, railroad parking permits and merchant parking permits. The Trenton side collections, one thousand nine hundred and one dollars. New York side collections, one thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Railroad credit card transactions, twenty-six thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Railroad permits, seven thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars. Railroad mobile payments, sixteen thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifteen cents. Online railroad permits, two hundred and seventy dollars. Parking meter collections, nine thousand, forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents and merchant permits, zero. We have a grand total of sixty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-one cents and that's submitted by Frank E. Urban III, our parking meters collection and repairer. Okay, today I decided that I was going to step away from a basic ward report, but just give you a comprehensive report on one of the committees that I chair. I chair the Accident and Review Committee, which pretty much monitors and can give you information on speeding and the accidents that we're having around the city. It also enables us to determine where four-way stop signs are going to be placed, which are based on accidents. After our committee meeting that we had last week, I was advised of a new tool that our police department is going to be using. Now, if we think about Waze, the, what is it, GPS tracking program and Google Maps, we know that you are able to determine exactly how soon or how long it's gonna take you to get to a given coordinate. That's done by app collection or data that's collected from the apps that you download on your cell phone. So we're gonna be partnering with a company that uses third-party app information that allows us to pull information from satellites and really look and see exactly where our streets are most congested and to actually see where traffic speed is going. So I had a demonstration from, from one of the police officers and we're able to zoom in to small sections of the city of Linden and determine how congested it is and what the average speed is in that, on that particular block and even a stretch of blocks. So when a resident now calls you, my fellow council colleagues, you can send that request through me, through the Accident Review Committee, and we can actually have that data pulled. So randomly, we just, I just asked them, can you just pull X, Y, Z street on this particular day for this three-hour period? And we saw that while people are complaining that there's so much speeding on this particular block, that eighty-five percent of the people are going nineteen miles per hour or less. So what this tool is gonna enable us to do is determine where you have an occasional speeder, where you have a speeding concern, where you have a speeding issue and where you have a speeding crisis. This is going to enable us to really allocate our police force to sit back and monitor those areas. We used to have Street of the Week where they would monitor a particular block in a particular ward on a rotating basis. Well, sometimes we pick up a lot of traffic violators, sometimes we wouldn't. But this tool is going to help us identify those areas that are of greatest concern and we're really, really hoping that we can focus in and really put a stop to some of the useless and reckless speeding. As for the four-way stop signs, we still do a traffic study. We're able to pull that information and based on how many accidents there are in a rolling twelve months, we'll determine whether or not we are allowed by law, not by emotion, to put a four-way stop sign in place. So once again, if you have any questions or any concerns about speeding on any particular block, any stretch of area, just contact your council person and they will send that information directly to me. And I, like I said, I do chair the Accident Review Committee, which, you know, monitors the traffic and different things of that nature. And we can have a study done on that. Hopefully, within the next, I would say, thirty days, we'll be ready to roll full swing with that. They are in the process right now of training all of our officers on how to use the tool, how to pull the data and how to understand the data so they can easily and, you know, concisely give that information to us so we can, in return, give it to our residents who we care so much about. That ends my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Orman. Councilman Javick.
Thank you, Council President. As chairman of the Fire Committee, the Fire Prevention Bureau collected the following monies during the month of August, two thousand and twenty-five, a total of seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Regarding the Linden Fire Department Emergency Medical Service Collections, the amount of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents for the month of August, two thousand and twenty-five have been added to the total deposits for two thousand and twenty-five totaling six hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Regarding our Construction Code Department, this department has issued one hundred and twenty-four permits and processed seventy-eight certificates and has issued sixty-four summonses for the month of August, two thousand and twenty-five. Monthly revenue is as follows. Building CCO permits and additional permit fees, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Zoning, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Court settlements for the month, seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars. The reflective total being eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Regarding our Board of Health, they are holding their fourth annual health fair on Saturday, October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, from eleven AM to two PM in the School One Gym. Once again, the event will feature local health and wellness organizations and businesses, a variety of free health screenings, testing and immunizations and prizes and giveaways. All are welcome and there is no charge for admission. Linden area health and wellness organizations that would like to register for a free table at the event should call the Board of Health at nine oh eight, four seven four, eight four oh nine and ask to speak to one of our outreach specialists. Good evening, everybody. So two additional items I would like to mention regarding Linden's Fire Department. One is mark your calendar for October third, five to seven PM in front of Linden City Hall for Fire Prevention Night. This year's slogan is Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home. Also, the Fire Department will be having the Gary, the Gary, the Gary Lettisi Memorial Blood Drive on October fifteenth, one to seven PM at the Seventh Ward Recreation Center, which is at twenty-nine oh seven Tremly Point Road. To make an appointment, visit nybc.org/letizia. Appointments are encouraged, but walk-ins are welcome. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out on September fourth to our first community ice cream social at Nowsky Park. I'm sure you enjoyed all the ice cream as much as I did. Another item that is in the ward going on is tree trimmings and removals. They're continuing in the ward and I just ask for everybody's patience. There's a lot of requests and as long as you're on the list, it will get done. And just one last thing, if you have a dog, please stop by our city clerk's office in City Hall for a license. This will also include a free rabies vaccine when we do them. Having a license protects your pet and the public. I can be reached at nine oh eight, four nine four, four six oh eight or email me at bjavik@linden-newjersey.gov. On Facebook, Second Ward Councilman Barry Javik. And as always, additional information can always be found on our city of Linden website. Council President, end of report.
Thank you, Councilman Javick. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to take a moment to say happy birthday to my husband today. He is such an unselfish partner, always supporting me and allowing me the time and space to serve the public. This Friday, we'll be celebrating twenty-two years of marriage, so cheers. Now, I'd like to take the time to congratulate someone very special here at the City of Linden, Mr. Shane Gillette. Congratulations on your well-deserved promotion. Shane, you are one of the hardest-working employees at the City of Linden, and we are truly fortunate to have you on our team. As a self-starter, a strategic thinker, you are consistently going above and beyond to get the job done without hesitation and without question. Your dedication makes the councils' work easier, and that does not go unnoticed. This promotion reflects your talent, your drive, and your commitment. You have earned every bit of the recognition, and I am so pleased to see it come your way. Keep your eye on the prize and never let anyone dim your light. It shines far too bright. Continue to lead with the same determination and integrity that brought you here, and there is no limit to what you can achieve. Congratulations. Finally, to my neighbors, we are living in a time when the world feels more divided than ever. Each day, we see headlines filled with anger, hate, and fear. Too often, political debates spill into our daily lives as confrontations, not conversations. But hate does not define us. Fear does not define us. What defines us are our shared values, our resilience, and our humanity. We cannot control the broader political climate, but we can control how we respond here at home. Hate grows when good people stay silent. Healing begins when communities stand together. That means choosing empathy over anger, respect over hostility, and listening instead of shouting. We are not alone. We are neighbors, partners, one community, and when we stand together, hate loses its power. Our path forward is clear: reject division, embrace understanding, and move ahead, not as opponents, but as neighbors united in dignity and respect. And remember, Councilwoman Caldwell always follows up and follows through. I invite you to my community meeting on October 14, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. at the Linden Public Library. If you're not registered to vote, please reach out to me, (908) 531-0676. My email is mcallwell@linden-newjersey.gov, and I will personally help you get registered. Together, let's keep your voices strong and our city moving forward. That concludes my report, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caldwell. Councilman Mohammed.
Thank you, Council President. Go ahead. For citizens of Linden, I just want to let everybody know school is back. I think we have to be very careful of how we drive. And again, I too want to compliment Mr. Shane Gillette on his great work. And he's an exemplary person that I have observed over the years, doing an outstanding And also, the DPW is doing an excellent job in fulfilling this, its mandate, to keep the city clean, the sewers responding, and we say, keep up the good work. Thank you. God bless you, and God bless the City of Linden.
Thank you, Councilman.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Rivas.
Good evening, citizens of Linden and neighbors of the Fifth Ward. I'd like to advise you that we have some work done, completed, on Baltimore Avenue, and I think I shared that word with Mark, as well as Chandler Avenue, of the road being paved. So thank you to everyone that made this possible. It has been something that we've been, our neighbors have been waiting for a long time. I also want to give a recognition to our Community Service Department, the Department of Public Works, for assisting one of our neighbors. On the corner of Cranford Avenue, Bergen Avenue, one of the trees fell in one of their cars, and their response was immediately to assist the neighbors and make sure that it will not go to any type of injuries or more damages, although we already got established for that. I'd like to express my sympathy and sincerely how sorry I feel about the situation that is happening on a senior's building in my ward. The Housing Authority situation is something that is now news in the city. And while I do not want to express my own opinions about it, I'd like everyone that resides in the Housing Authority to make sure to get the information, the right information that what really is happening. Don't let anyone come in and tell you things that they may or may not be a correct statement of what the reality is. There's a lot of people that may be able to come into you to tell you many different things, and we can easily fall into believing anything that two or three people will repeat out there. While the situation is something that I think our city has engaged in trying to resolve, I wanted to make sure that as part of the neighbors on that area, I hope that all this situation comes to a successful fixing, better sooner than later. I want to congratulate the Polish community on the festival celebration this weekend. At the same time, I'd like to recognize that Linden is a diverse city, and I will be remiss if I will not recognize the Hispanic community in our town. Yesterday, started the National Hispanic Heritage Month that will go on between September 15 and October 15. It honors the cultural contribution of Hispanic and Latin Americans in the United States. Using this opportunity, I'd like to congratulate the residents from the different countries that are celebrating the independence today. During this month, I meant, today is the celebration of the independence of Mexico. Yesterday was the celebration of the independence of Costa Rica, Salvador, Guatemala, Nicaragua, and then September 18, the independence of the country of Chile. If there is any of those citizens from those countries residing on our city, I'd like to recognize that on their independence. I want to, as I make reference, to please remind all of us citizens, and I'd like to thank everyone that makes presence here in our City Council. It is important to us to make sure that when we have something to say, we'll raise the voice to our city officials. We represent you. We represent every one of you and every aspect of what our duties as a public officials are. We represent the citizens of the city, but we do not own the city. Please make sure that you understand that your voice matters, and don't let anyone be your voice. You can be your voice yourself. Make sure that your voice counts. Don't anyone decide for you. Don't anyone take your rights away from what your rights are. Let's look for each other and never let back down. I want to recognize today my neighbor, Michael Lobefell, and Dr. Olivera for School Number Four. Your message has, is continued to be heard by me and trying to work together with our council colleague from the First Ward, Ms. Ormond. I have had a conversation today. I know there is a traffic problem in School Number Four for picking up and dropping up of children. It has been for many years. I live in the area, and I know exactly what it is. We're going to be looking forward for any type of initiative that is going to help resolve that problem. It might not be the perfect initiative, but we're going to be looking for something that could alleviate the problem in that area. That's all I have. Madam President, I've run out of time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Do you need additional time, or are you good?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Delgado.
Good evening, Sixth Ward. Before I get into my formal report, just a quick reminder about grass. I know winter will be here soon, and the grass will be dead, but for right now, there's a couple of areas that grass is getting a little high. I don't want anyone to get fined, so please, let's maintain our properties. And look, any shooting is one too many. I know what occurred yesterday at Wendy's is very upsetting. This incident does remain under investigation by the Linden Police Detective Bureau, and anyone with any information is urged to contact Detective Jim Garrison at (908) 474-8045. Please know that in collaboration with our Police Department, we take safety very seriously because without safety, there's nothing. Being safe is very, very important. That same night, we had a loose dog within the ward going around a beautiful lab. Our police came out around midnight. I was out there. And one of the things, it just struck me, like, our police deal with so much, from something as serious as a shooting to helping save a poor animal that's in the streets. And another thing is, our neighborhoods are safe. I felt very comfortable walking that neighborhood. I walk it every day, pretty much. It was midnight. There were residents out, also walking their dogs that night, that didn't even know what happened. So we all got to work together to make sure to maintain our safety because it is of vital, vital importance. Big update from the state of New Jersey, Department of Transportation. I know this has been a long time coming. They are almost done with their study about the trucks making the left-hand turn onto wood lawn, especially, sometimes a right-hand turn into wood lawn and going onto residential streets. They're almost done with the permits, the study to take additional actions on the 109 to help alleviate that issue. Part of the problem that I've seen, and some residents have mentioned it, is that making the left on South Woods, sometimes it gets very backed up there, so they take shortcuts. So I also flagged that for the Department of Transportation, but this should also be within their study that they conducted. So I'm very excited that Miss Patience from the state of New Jersey contacted me a few days ago, saying that they're almost done, and they'll be taking action. And I want to thank Mayor Armstead and Joe Bodak for all your help in getting that moved forward. I know it's been a couple of months. And I also want to recognize the employee who gave me the idea to contact the state, which was Tyrone, who retired because this was an issue for many, Tyrone gives, for many years. We did put signage up right away on our property, but that didn't do much, so hopefully, the state actions will help solve the issue. On Liberty and 13th Street, we've added "Slow Children at Play" signs because we're getting a lot of kids in our neighborhoods, and we have to make sure that we create the safest environment possible for all of our students, because having, for all of our kids. Because having kids in the neighborhoods, it's a beautiful thing, but we got to make sure that it's safe. And I will be working with my colleague, Councilwoman Ormond, to make sure that we could review those speeding issues. I have some ideas of where the speeding is, but you tell me with the data, right? It's best to deploy our resources. I want to thank all our residents that came out to the ice cream social. It was really, really, really nice to see so many kids, so many parents, so many families there, having fun, enjoying each other. In an era of technology, where so many kids now are just on the phone, on the laptop, on the discords, on the this, on the that, it was nice to see them interacting in person, having fun outside of school, in our neighborhood. So I definitely want to encourage that moving forward because I think that type of engagement is what's going to help resolve a lot of the issues that we see going on in our nation. I know it was a very hard week, this past week and a half, and we just have to say that any violence, nonstop, political violence, has no place for it, cannot happen. I know my parents left their countries because of political instability, because in their nations, being part of one side or another could get you killed. Here, we have elections. We have debate. We have conversations. When I sit on people's couches for hours on end, there are, some are Republican, some are Democrats, a lot of them are just not into politics whatsoever, apolitical. But what I've found is that we do have so much more in common than what separates us. I do find that social media and the algorithm is designed to separate us. It's designed to show content that only benefits your biases, that confirms your own biases and separates you from your neighbors, and we see people unfriend each other and this and that, and try, and get into silos. We got to break that down and look at, you're a human being, I'm a human being. We all want the same thing, a good job, the ability to raise our families, the ability to live in safety. And I think, once we think of it that way, once we start having conversations once again, we could solve a lot of those issues. I could be reached at (908) 377-6620. My Facebook is Eloy J. Delgado, and that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Delgado. Councilman Strano.
Thank you, Council President. I have the personnel report for this month. Number one, in the Construction Code, A is to approve the continued appointment of Roldeana Jean, a student intern at the rate of eighteen dollars an hour, not to exceed twenty hours. That was, that is effective September 17 of 2025. In the Office of the Mayor, A is approving the posting for a clerk one part-time in constituent services at an annual rate of twenty dollars and forty-nine cents per hour, not to exceed thirty hours per week. And B is approving the continued employment of Abigail Armstead, a student assistant through October 10 of 2025, at no change in rate. And three, in the Police Department, A is approving the resignation in good standing of Gerard Jordan, a clerk one, effective September 5 of 2025. B is approving the appointment of Austin Kuterka, a public safety telecommunicator trainee at salary of forty-four thousand dollars a year, effective September 22 of 2025, and that's pending the successful completion of all pre-employment requirements. C is approving the posting for a clerk one full-time at the annual salary range of thirty-seven thousand two ninety-eight to sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seven. D is approving the resignation in good standing of Michael Chabak, a public safety telecommunicator, and that's effective September 24 of 2025. E is approving the appointment of Dior Master, a clerk one, full-time at the annual salary of forty thousand dollars, effective September 23, 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Four is in the Board of Health. A is approving the appointment of John Lipaka as a volunteer for Linden Health and Wellness Fair to be held on October 11 of 2025. B is approving the appointment of Sandra Roman RN as a volunteer for the Linden Health and Wellness Fair to be held on October 11 of 2025. And C is approving the appointment of Amy Bernard as a volunteer for the Linden Health and Wellness Fair to be held on October 11, 2025 as well. Five, in the Office of the Tax Assessor, approving the appointment of Pamela McFarley, clerk one, full-time at the annual salary of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, effective September 22, 2025, and that's pending the successful completion of all pre-employment requirements. Six, in the Department of Community Services, in the Division of Public Works, A is approving the promotion of Shane Gillette to supervisor of public works at the annual salary of eighty-three thousand one twenty-nine, effective September 17, 2025. And in the Division of Engineering, A is approving the appointment of Stephanie Nikotiyadis, senior engineer, full-time, effective September 17, 2025, at the annual salary of seventy-nine thousand dollars. And B is approving the salary adjustment of Steven Brodmann, a principal drafting technician, to eighty-five thousand dollars, effective September 17 of 2025. Seven, in the Personnel Department, is A approving the FMLA and NJFLA leaves that are on file in the Division of Personnel. I move for approval and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Okay. Additionally, without any slate to the other city employees that were just promoted in the Engineering Department, we do have Shane Gillette here in the audience, and I'd like him to stand in recognition.
Needless to say, needless to say, it's well deserved. It was earned, and you deserve it, and I'm so happy that we're able to do this for you. Welcome. Now, moving on to my ward report. We have several street improvement projects currently being performed in the Seventh Ward. There is, right now, concrete repair work, which comes first naturally. Curbs, sidewalks, handicap ramps at the corners of those streets being resurfaced. And I know it's an inconvenience to our residents where parking is at a premium, but as they say, you know, you have to break a few eggs to make a cake, and I appreciate your patience with this, and it's a, should only be at most, I think, a ten-day operation, weather permitting, from start to finish on most of these projects. That concludes my report for this evening. Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Strano. Councilman Armstead.
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to start off by congratulating you, Shane. When it comes to getting work done, I haven't seen anybody like you. Anytime I get on the phone and ask for you to help me out and do something, you are there, right on point, you know? And it not just goes to show the hard work, it goes to show the character of the person that you are, you know? Because some of those things, I understand, some of these things that you don't have to do, but you do anyway because you care that much about the city. And we have these conversations many times about how much you care about this place. We need more people with your attitude. We appreciate you so much here in the city. I'm going to be real brief with my ward report. As Councilman Rivas was saying, we did get Chandler Avenue completely done from one end, from Elizabeth Avenue all the way to St. George Avenue. I mean, it just didn't make sense to stop in the Eighth Ward and not finish those few little blocks in the Fifth Ward that needed to be done as well. And we also got Baltimore Avenue finished from Deal Avenue to Elizabeth Avenue. These guys, not only just that, they put the new curbs in where new curbs needed to be put in. And I just wanted to also mention our ice cream social at St. Mark's Park, or Dorothy Ford Park. It was really nice to see the people come out, and we had a few seniors come out. I'm talking about some seniors were in their nineties, and they came out to enjoy this event. This is what we need in this community, and we really appreciate everybody who came out to show their support. Now, if anybody needs to reach me, you can reach me at marmstead@linden-newjersey.gov, or you can call me. My phone number is area code (908) 463-8986. I prefer that you call because then I get a chance to, you can get an email, but when you talk to somebody, you get a clearer understanding of everything. And that's all I have for my report for today.
Thank you, Councilman Armstead. Councilwoman Houdak.
Thank you. So the leaves are beginning to fall, and you have two options. You're going to rake and put them in bags, or you could place them in the street. And if the leaves are in the street, the wind will blow and the leaves will move, so you need to be patient. The Linden, the Department of Public Works, they're going to be executing a plan to pick up our leaves. It's not on our sanitation schedule. There's no set date, but they will do an amazing job of cleaning up the leaves, so as always, I request your cooperation. I'm proud to say that because of all of you, alleged illegal car repair shops are being shut down in the Tenth Ward. Every one of you get the credit. Because of everyone, we get the result. Now, I still need your assistance in addressing the remainder alleged illegal car lots, car repair shops, the businesses, and the renters that are not registered. So please, if you see something, say something, take photos, videos, email them to me. Now, in conclusion, last week, we lost one of our veterans, and his name was Uncle Steve Hopday. He was also a member of our Linden Police Department. And I could say that Uncle Steve is now in heaven with two other veterans, my dad and also Ruben. Today, I was in the company of an Admiral of the United States Navy with the Linden High School ROTC, and I heard a very profound statement. The day we understand... Hopday. He was also a member of our Linden Police Department. And I could say that, um, Uncle Steve is now in heaven with two other veterans, my dad, and also Ruben. Today, I was in the company of an admiral of the United States Navy with the Linden High School ROTC, and I heard a very profound statement. "The day we understand that the right wing and the left wing are part of the same bird, only then can the eagle fly and the United States of America be great." That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Houdak. Okay, um, I have a short report for tonight also. As we always say, Linden is a big melting pot. Um, I want to congratulate our Polonias, who will be representing the city of Linden, uh, in the Pulaski Day Parade in New York on October fifth. Anyone who would like to join, please contact me or St. Teresa's Parish for tickets for the bus to New York. Everyone is welcome to come join us. Um, this Saturday, um, September twentieth, we're having the Sixth Annual Polish Festival at the Raymond Woodbauer Promenade on Wood Avenue from two PM to eight PM. We invite you to come out for a day of authentic Polish food, as well as other food vendors, Polish merchandise vendors, Polish living history exhibit, children's activities, and Polish music. DJ Carol will be back this year for some great dance music. This year, we are celebrating a one-thousand-year anniversary of the country of Poland. The rain date for this event will be Sunday, September twenty-first. Also, I was asked to mention, September twenty-sixth, at four-thirty PM, in front of the Union County Courthouse, we'll have the, uh, Polish flag raising, so please come out for that. Um, as many of my colleagues have mentioned, this, yesterday started Hispanic Heritage Month, and the city of Linden will also be having our Latin Festival on October fourth, uh, on Wood Avenue from twelve to seven PM, so please come out for that also. Our Hometown Heroes Program is still taking applications for Linden veterans to have their banners placed on Wood Avenue. This program is one of Linden's best programs, in my opinion. For more information or questions on how to, um, get your banner up, or one of your relatives' banners up, please contact the Linden Sid, Uptown Linden office at nine zero eight seven one eight five eight three one. The Linden Public Library launched their open house two weeks ago, and had the launch of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. The Ly, Linden Library is the first in the state of New Jersey to receive this grant. If you know children from birth to age five, uh, please have their parent or guardian go to the library and fill out the application to receive a free book once a month until they turn age five from the Dolly Parton Imagination Foundation. This is a free, great program to help children build their own early childhood library at home to promote early literacy. Also, if you know of any companies or organizations that would like to donate to the Friends of Linden Library to help defray the cost, uh, please contact Teresa Valani at the Linden Public Library. More information can be had at the library. Mayor, time for your report.
Thank you, Council President. Before I get started, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Shane Gillette, uh, on his promotion. Uh, Shane, you have been a dedicated employee from the second you got hired in this town. Um, and I remember when we first tried to promote you some years back, a civil service snafu kind of prevented you from getting to where you need to be at right now. Uh, but that didn't deter you, you kept working hard, you, um, continued to show that you were committed to this city and committed to your job. Um, and, and, in fact, you continued to act like you were a supervisor, even though you weren't. And, uh, you'd be commended for that, okay? And it just goes to show you that, uh, just been, have stick, we call it stick-to-itiveness. You just stuck right to it, and you did what you had to do, and, uh, and here you are, a supervisor, and a, well-deserved supervisor, and we're proud of you. I've known you since you were knee-high to a grape, and, uh, I'm very proud of you. You and your whole family, you know, I know your whole family for years. In fact, some of them even call me Uncle Derek. Okay, so, so congratulations, and keep up the good work. We're, we're all proud of you, I'm very proud of you, okay? I remember when you played football, you, you had that leadership quality back then, you know, so, uh, you keep up the good work, and the good things are gonna keep happening to you in this town, uh, especially if I'm here, okay? Take, take care, you keep doing a good job. Okay. Next, I want to, um, talk about two gentlemen who we lost this week, uh, two police officers. One of them was Dave Deller. Uh, Dave, uh, served as a police officer, and if you all know, I've been here for quite some time, uh, thirty years, and Dave was a, he was a young man, as far as I'm concerned, he was a lot younger than me. Uh, I think he died at fifty-eight years old. Uh, again, he was a good police officer, very quiet, easygoing guy, uh, and, um, you know, my condolences go out to him and his family. Uh, the other person who passed this week, uh, was a gentleman, gentleman by the name of Steve Hopday. Uh, he was an officer as well. I've, I've known Steve, uh, since I was, as I mentioned earlier, knee-high to a grape, and him and my father were very good friends. Um, and that's not surprising, they both had these outgoing personalities, and, uh, and they seemed to be able to get along with everybody. Uh, so Steve, uh, to him and his, to his family, my condolences as well. Steve, uh, all, he, he doubled as a Santa Claus for us every year, uh, you know, he used to grow his long white beard every year, and he just was a, a fun and loving guy to be around. So, uh, I'd like to, at this time, just have a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you. Okay. Uh, as mentioned earlier, um, Wednesday, October fifteenth, um, there will be a, a memorial blood drive in honor of a guy by the name of Gary Lattisia, uh, and it's titled, Be the Reason for Someone's Tomorrow. Um, so, a special note from, uh, Dr. Matt Lattisia, who's Gary's family, and he mentions that Gary was diagnosed with leukemia at the age of sixty-eight. If not for the countless gallons of donated blood that kept him valiantly battling, battling cancer, we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have been able to create those extra memories that final year. Please consider donating so that someone else, or someone else's loved one, may receive that same precious gift of life. It was written, again, by Dr. Matt Lattisia. So again, that's Wednesday, October fifteenth, um, at one o'clock PM to seven PM. It'll be at the Seventh Ward Recreation Center, and that's twenty-nine oh seven Tremely Point Road. Um, there's a QR code that I have here up, and it's posted throughout the building. You can make an appointment, or you can, um, visit nybc.org/lattisia, okay? So it's, it's encouraged that you make an appointment, but walk-ins are welcome. Uh, tonight, we mentioned ice cream socials, and, uh, we had them throughout the town, uh, and they were a complete success. Uh, we decided to have ice cream socials because all too often, uh, people claim that they don't see politicians until election time. Uh, and Linden is a changing community, and we noticed that the, uh, the face of our community was just changing, and there were a lot of people who we didn't know. So we decided to have ice cream socials throughout the, the entire town, uh, and they were a complete success. We got a chance to meet a lot of new people, uh, and a lot of people came to the ice cream socials, not just to have ice cream, but they came out to express some of their concerns in their wards, and, uh, we listened, we took notes, uh, and we acted on a number of, of their complaints and requests. So, um, kudos to, uh, the person who came up with those, uh, with that idea to have ice cream socials. Some other announcements, um, on Friday, September nineteenth, Qdoba will be having a grand opening, and that's at nineteen fifty-one East Edgar Road. Uh, that is, uh, right on the corner where Park Avenue's at. Uh, so, uh, if you get a chance, stop by. It's, once again, Linden is a very active and alive town when it comes to redevelopments and, and, and new business coming to the town. So, uh, later on that evening, we'll have, uh, what we call the Blues People will be playing at seven PM at the promenade. As mentioned earlier, the Polish Festival will be Saturday, September twentieth, from two PM to eight PM at the promenade, uh, rain date is September twenty-first. And also mentioned earlier was that, that we have Fire Prevention Night. Uh, that'll be held Friday, October third, five PM to eight PM on Wood Avenue. It's a great night to bring your children out, uh, and learn about fire prevention, and, and how to, um, basically, um, and how our fire department operates. So, uh, and it's, there's, there's food and, um, it's just a good time for all, so please stop by if you get a chance, especially if you bring your children. The Latin Festival will be held on Saturday, October fourth, from twelve PM to seven PM, uh, with a rain date of Saturday, October eleventh. So again, our Latin Festival has gotten bigger and bigger every year, uh, and I think it's gonna be a, a great time to come out, and, again, it's a Latin Festival, just like, just like as our Polish Festival is, um, but everybody's invited to all of our, um, our, our festivals, and, and they're all great. I don't care where you are, who you come, where you come from, they're just a great time for everybody. There's gonna be a Linden Health and Wellness Fair, it's gonna be held Saturday, October eleventh, from ten AM to three PM at school number one. Uh, good opportunity to come out, have your blood pressure checked, and just find out, um, you know, just a good opportunity to find out if you have anything that you maybe diagnosed with, like, maybe high blood sugar or high blood pressure. So please stop out, uh, that day. Holiday Inn Express Ribbon Cutting will be held on Thursday, October sixteenth. Now, the Holiday Inn Ribbon Cutting is, uh, special to us because we've been working on this project for half a decade. Uh, they came to us, uh, pre-COVID, and COVID basically decimated the, um, the, um, hotel business. So, these gentlemen held out, held out, and held out, and finally, um, as things picked back up again, they were able to go ahead and, and pursue, pursue that, uh, that, that investment. Uh, it's a great investment, and I think it's gonna do great here in Linden, and we look forward to them opening. One other thing, we have, uh, Linden Seventy-Second Halloween Parade will be held on October twenty-sixth, from one PM to four PM, that's gonna be on Wood Avenue. Uh, we're hoping to try to do a little something different this year at, at the end of the parade, uh, to honor our city, uh, its one-hundred years in existence. So, uh, please come out and attend. Uh, again, it's a great day for, uh, Linden residents and anybody else who should attend. One of the, my favorite things to report on is, um, what we call our non-residential development fees. Uh, and, and it's gonna be a godsend, it, it is becoming a godsend for us, um, and it's going to allow us to, um, live up to the state's expectation of us creating affordable housing in Linden. Uh, so during the month of, um, August, we received another eighty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, bringing our total number to nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-three cents. And we just started collecting this money back in May. So, uh, again, at, the developments that we have in town, uh, those non-residential developments are gonna allow us to, um, really pursue what is necessary regarding our, our low-income housing, low-income and moderate-income housing problem in town here, that, again, the state is mandating. And last but not least, uh, you may have heard about our, if you see something, say something, uh, with regards to some of the things that are going on in the town. Our, our DPW and our other departments are only as good as the eyes and the ears of our people, and that, um, so if you see something, say something. You see a branch land in the street, you see something that's unsightly, uh, you don't like the way something's being done, uh, by any department, you need to give us a call. And, uh, you give us a call, and we'll, we'll address it as best we can. Uh, it's been working out quite well. We've been getting a number of calls over the last couple of weeks, and, uh, we've been deploying and dispatching our, our, our workforce out there, uh, namely, guys like Shane Gillette, they go out and take care of things and get it done. Uh, and, um, we just want to keep that up, and again, just for, just make for a better city. So if you see something, say something. And that concludes my report, Mr. and Mrs. President.
Thank you, Mayor Armstead. Councilwoman Strano?
Thank you, Council President. I know we're, uh, doing something that's, uh, out of order here, and I appreciate you allowing me the time to, uh, offer my condolences to, uh, Officer Dave Dealer, and, um, just to his family, and also, um, Lieutenant Steve Hopday. Um, I first met Steve Hopday forty-five years ago. Uh, I used to live in the trailer park, which is for Dirk O's Trailer Court on St. George Avenue. Steve had a campsite in, uh, Atlantic Cape, no, it was Cape, Cape May, and, um, uh, he purchased my trailer, uh, back then. And lo and behold, um, nineteen eighty-seven rolls around, and this, I'm just talking forty-five years ago. Uh, I, my wife and I buy a house in Tremely Point. I didn't know it at the time, but I only, it was like four doors away, and, and Steve's, uh, great nature, he, he saw me and said, there it is, there goes the neighborhood. And, uh, he was just such a character, and, uh, I would be remiss. I mean, he was my neighbor for forty-some odd years. He was a true Tremely, um, icon. He, he was born and raised there, never moved away, and, uh, it was, uh, an integral part of the Holy Family, uh, church, and, um, he will surely be missed. And, uh, I mean, even playing Santa Claus, he visited, uh, my house when my children were little, and to this day, they, they talk about Santa Claus coming to visit them, and it still sticks. Um, I was telling, um, uh, my children at a dinner we had this past week, and that Steve had passed away, and I referred to him as Santa Claus, and my, um, my oldest daughter's boyfriend was looking at me like, are you nuts? What do you mean Santa died? You know, and I, it's, he, it was just, um, you know, he's sort, surely's, um, gonna be missed, and, um, Tremely just won't be the same without him. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that little piece of history there.
Yep.
And our Linden Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph, yes. He, uh, Mr. Hopday did really, um, touch many lives in Linden as Santa Claus. I know my own children also, so we really appreciate him and send our best to his family, and I hope he rests in peace. Before I forget also, Shane Gillette, congratulations. Um, I want to make, I've been watching your family out there. All of us up here on this council are very, very proud of you, but I think there's some people sitting right near you that are very, are more proud of you than anybody else. So, your mother, your whole family, you know, the work ethic they instilled in you, really, the credit we make goes to your mom and everyone. So thank you for raising such a lovely man, and we know he's gonna do extremely well, Shane. We're so proud of you. Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to, uh, resolutions this evening. Okay? We have resolutions twenty twenty-five to, uh, three fifty-three through twenty twenty-five three eighty-six. Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion that we, I make a motion to accept, um, resolutions, and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes, two all, but I, I will abstain in three seventy-eight, three eighty-one, three eighty-three, and three eighty-five.
Three eighty-one, and three eighty-three, and three eighty-five?
Three eighty-one, three eighty-three, and three eighty-five. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yama Kaitis?
Yes. Just a reminder, on a dais, if you're not speaking, turn off your microphones, please. Okay, little housekeeping note here, um, for those that might have arrived a little bit later. If you'd like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets here in front of the room. Okay, we'll now move on to ordinances on introduction, beginning with ordinance sixty-nine forty-seven, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter Seven traffic of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, nineteen ninety-nine, passed November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine, and approved November twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section One, that Chapter Seven traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows: Seven-dash-thirty-three handicap parking regulations, seven-dash-thirty-three-point-one-A handicap parking on street, delete eight thirty-two Essex Avenue one space, and seven oh three Knopf Street one space."
Okay. Can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number sixty-nine dash forty-second, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yama Kaitis?
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine forty-eight, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter Two Administration of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, nineteen ninety-nine, passed November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine, and approved November twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section One, that Chapter Two Administration, Article Four, Departments Established, Section Two-dash-twelve, Department of Police, shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows: Delete Section Two- Delete Section 2.12.1 Created Department of Police and add Section 2.12.1 Created as follows. The Department of Police is hereby created pursuant to NJSA 40A:14-118 and shall consist of the following positions. One chief, five captains, 14 lieutenants, 24 sergeants, 115 patrol officers. Force Leo, three officers, and civilian personnel as the council may determine by ordinance. The department shall be under the day-to-day supervision and control of the chief pursuant to NJSA 40A:14-118, shall be appointed by the mayor.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordinance 6948, please?
Yes, Council President. I move for introduction ordinance number 6948, request a second.
Second.
Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6949, please.
An ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Establishing its Schedule of Titles, Salary Ranges, and Regulations for Maintaining the Classification and Salary Standardization Plan of All Employees of the City of London," passed August 15th, 1995, and approved August 16th, 1995, adopting Salary Schedule 1 TT1.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordinance 6949, please?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to move for introduction ordinance number 6949, request a second.
Second.
Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
For the clarification, Madam President, I believe this is void of the process because I know you asked if we have questions on the [inaudible]. Because the package shows 6948. I guess it's introduction, we can discuss it, but it might be a [inaudible]. Yes, I will say yes. Thank you.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. We're going to move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. Okay. We request on city business only. Okay, beginning with Mr. Craig Halloran.
Craig Halloran, 120 Donaldson Place. First of all, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for all the senseless murders that we keep hearing about. You know, this has nothing to do with politics, so please. You had the gentleman who ran a bodega in Texas who was beheaded. You had the poor Ukrainian woman on the train in, I believe, North Carolina who was stabbed to death. And of course, we, you know, we've all heard, I don't know how many times this past week about Charlie Kirk. So I ask for a moment of silence for these people and all the other people that were murdered senselessly that we don't know about. Thank you. Now, my other comments were, I know Keith from Recreation did some great presentations, not only here at the council meetings, but he went around to each ward to get the public's input on what the public thought each park in their ward should include and what kind of improvements they were looking for. And I thought he did a great job. So I mean, I know there was other things that I believe he got a grant for, I believe it, I could be wrong, of like $2 million for one park to dredge and stuff like that. You know, so I mean, we keep hearing about money and, you know, being spent, and I'm looking forward to enjoying some of these parks as I get older. You know, but other than that, there's a lot of stuff I know going on, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of people here for, you know, all the different festivals that we have. And I'm hoping that someday we will have more festivals. So thank you very much. Do have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Pat Hero. I live in Linden, New Jersey. Tomorrow, September 17th, is Constitution Day, the beginning of Constitution Week, in which we celebrate the enactment's anniversary of the United States Constitution, which has been the law of the land since 1787. It's the 238th anniversary. Now, tonight, I'd like to pay tribute to our former council president, Robert Bunk. When I spoke before him, he always treated me with respect and dignity. He knew to represent the people. He had to hear what they had to say. He let us speak on resolutions before the city council so we could be better informed about what the city is doing. While he was a Democrat and I was a political independent, there was mutual respect between us. I remember talking at a shop rate with a woman with my face toward the shelves, helping her try to find an item. When I turned around, I stared into the face of Bob Bunk. I said, "See, I'm saying the same things behind your back that I say to your face." We both laughed, talked for a little bit, and then moved on. I remember when I was walking down Wood Avenue, it was a massive rainstorm, soaked to the skin and dripping wet, only to see a very nice car pull up to the curb. The window rolled down, Bob Bunk in the driver's seat. He offered me a ride. He cared more about my comfort than his own convenience, or I might add, his car's interior. I was driven home by him and think that this is Linden's strength, people of differing political persuasions, helping one another and getting along. In closing, in regard to recent events, I would like to close with this quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "And we must all learn to live together as brothers, or we will all perish together as fools." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hero. Okay, Ed Kaminsky.
Good evening, Ed Kaminsky, Maple Avenue. I'm sorry, I'm going to rush through these. There's just a lot to go through. First of all, I guess I'd like to start with the positives. So those license plate readers, that's definitely a good thing, those additional sticks going up, because the traffic, the parking is just absolutely out of control, so hopefully that can help it, as well as the drones. Also want to give a shout out and thank you to the mayor. He did, I saw, I woke up not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago, to this whole thing that he wants investigations and all kinds of stuff. I'll take it a step further. Let's open up the books of the entire city, not just a certain senior citizen complex. So don't stop there. There's a lot to be done here. There's a lot of waste, and some of it we touched on already today. Of course, my heart goes out to the shootings, the victims of the shooting, a murderer, since the last council meeting, at least one murder I know of, and then, of course, the shooting, you know, from yesterday. So I hope those folks heal and can lead a very, you know, happy life considering what happened to them. Just want to mention bus drivers, you know, see something, say something. I saw a bus a couple of weeks ago, and I posted it. Before that, I first called the police. I couldn't believe what I was seeing. Speeding, running stop signs, skidding and coming, crossing across the WIT Terrace to stop and drop children off. And I couldn't see anything. I was behind the bus, but I guess he almost hit a woman because a woman just started screaming at him. But anyway, I know we were talking about monitoring traffic. It's hard sometimes. You know, if you have one-offs, I hope it's a one-off. But kudos to the police, they did what they could do. But more attention. We know what time these bus drivers get out approximately. This was in Sunnyside. I followed them all the way from the AA Field to almost McManus, and it was just horrific what I witnessed. Just chills. Senior housing, well, I guess that's an ongoing saga at the house there, news and everything like that. All I got to say is, you know, again, it got my attention, so of course I do my due diligence. I actually watched the entire court hearings. I think I got a sense of what's going on there. The judge had some very strong words for, I guess, you know, the mayor's wife's organization. Bottom line, I am disgusted. I'm bringing this up because we are picking on and using as pawns our aged, our most vulnerable, our disabled, and that shouldn't happen. I encourage everybody that's out there, watch the hearing, look at the judge's comments. And again, stuff is still going. And quite frankly, look at the attitude of the attorney of, that's representing, you know, the, you know, Mrs. Armstead's side. And then the debt, the $90 million in debt. I am so angry at the condescending tone during the budget that was given a couple of weeks ago, right? Now, I'm not a master mechanic, but if my car is firing and smoking, I know something's wrong.
Mr. Kaminsky, your time is up.
And ultimately, Mr. Rivas, a little late, but I thank you for standing up as somebody a part of the budget company and telling us exactly how dire our financial picture is. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Okay, can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay, before I close the meeting, I just want to remind all the council to please check your packets prior to coming to the Monday meeting and also emails from the clerk's office. The ordinance on introduction was in the packets and was sent out also Friday night. Email, 6949, it was for introduction. But again, I'm going to ask council members to please check your packets prior to coming to the meeting. We make note of any additions, if there are any, at the table during caucus. Okay, can we have a, the next council meeting will be as follows. Council conference meeting, Monday, October 20th, at 6:00 p.m. in the council conference room, City Hall. Council conference meeting prior to the council meeting, Tuesday, October 21st, at 6:00 p.m., council conference room. Council meeting, Tuesday, October 21st, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. These meetings will be held in person. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move to adjourn the meeting. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting respectfully, ask for a second.
Second.
Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.